Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm very welcome to the December 1, 2015 meeting of the White House and the Council for the purposes of considering the silent that come before it. I'm going to ask everyone, please rise for a moment of stop, silence, and remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Here.
President.
LaCourt.
Isaac.
Morrison.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Here.
And President Gray.
President. We have no minutes for approval this evening, and brings us to the first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to step forward and address council, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please remember that statements of derogatory nature of meaning and manner are not permitted. All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. We'll begin with Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We will begin next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Community Engagement. Chairperson Thompson.
Thank you, President. Community Engagement met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll begin again next week. Give them back sometime after six thirty.
Community Standards and Enforcement. Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last week. We will begin next Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We will begin next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Economic Development. Chairperson Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We will begin next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services. Chairperson Gerges.
Thank you, Mr. President. Construction Maintenance and Services also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we need to get some time in the back next week. We're on six thirty.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety. Chairperson Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. Our minutes are on file.
Next, we have thank you. Next, we have Parks and Recreation. Chairperson Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. We want to offer a variety of things. One thing that I forgot to tell you about is Parks and Recreation is actually December the tenth due to the holiday period coming up. MSA will be over there to go from Splash Pad. It starts at six o'clock. It's the Wyod Community Department. That's all I have.
Those are all the standing committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports. We'll begin with our mayor, Mr. Kim McEnroe.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our attorney, Mr. Mike Chan. Remember, you'll have one or two more standing.
Good evening, Mr. President. I am the special counsel. I only have one more chance after this evening. Our office has been concentrating on everything that we normally do, but we've also been working to build a transition. We've had Mr. Bivens in at least five or six times. He's gone to court. He's gone through some meetings with the police department. He's gone through some meetings with Joe Durham, our special counsel, and we're working to have as smooth a transition as possible, and I commit to each and every one of you that I will do my very best in the next month to keep Mr. Bivens engaged to the extent possible. I don't know if you're anywhere near that, and hopefully we won't speak. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, we have our Director of Development and Public Service, Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
All right. Moving on, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report this evening.
Our Director of Public Safety, Chuck Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report. I do want to bring attention to a letter that was received by the Chief of Police, the Deputy Chief, Mark Newcom. The letter is written by the Chief of the DEA Police, and oftentimes people that have been serviced very well don't say anything. It's the liars that make a lot of complaints. So to get a letter like this was very enlightening, and I'm just going to read it first and then last third. Dear Chief Zyski, I just wanted to take the opportunity to express my appreciation to Deputy Chief Mark Newcom for the outstanding support he's provided to Chalmers, B. Wiley, VA Police Service over the past several months. And the last paragraph says, Mark continues to assist the VA Police in many issues, whether it be assistance during emergency management exercises, training events, or coordination with other local law enforcement. I am extremely thankful for the support that is continuously provided by Deputy Chief Mark Newcom. So just like we should be aware that he's been recognized as VA for his outstanding service.
We have no officials' reports due to the fact that none have been filed since our last meeting, so that brings us to Communications, Propositions, and Complaints. We have one item that's listed on the agenda, and we have received no additional items since the beginning of the party. Next is our verification of copies. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next is our, we'll start with our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. We'll begin with third readings. We have Ordinance 86-2015, Making and Approving a Fund Transfer in the Amount of $3,006.35 from the fiscal year 2013, Jack Grant Fund to the General Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I have been introduced to Ordinance 86-2015. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 86-2015. Questions or comments? Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance 86-2015 has been adopted. It's the only item under third reading. Our first item under second reading is Ordinance 91-2015, Creating Chapter 1A4, Entitled Municipal Income Tax and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President, I have introduced Ordinance 91-2015 to the suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Canner for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 91-2015. Questions or comments? Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 91-2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Canner for adoption of Ordinance 91-2015. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance 91-2015 has been adopted. Next is Ordinance 95-2015, Making and Approving a Fund Transfer in the Amount of $100,000 from the Transfer Expense Account to the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund, and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is Ordinance 97-2015, Amending Various Sections of Chapter 135 of the Administrative Code and Declaring an Emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 98-2015, Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Wyod, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing Wyod LLC, DVA, Jimmy Johns to operate a special permit under Section 1123.10(c1) to allow a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on land located at 4354 East Broad Street owned by Plaza International Properties. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. It's scheduled for a public hearing on December 15, 2015. Our next ordinance under second reading is Ordinance 99-2015, Making an Appropriation for Current General Fund Expenses, Street Expenses, and State Highway Materials Expenses during the period from January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2016, in a total sum of $29,40,028.3 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is Ordinance 100-2015, Making an Appropriation for Certain Special Revenue, Internal Service, and Judiciary Accounts for the calendar year 2016 in a total sum of $16,097,035.12 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is also being read by Title Holman. Moving on, we have Ordinance 101-2015, Declaring the Improvement to Certain Parcels along Etna Road in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, Providing for the Collection and Deposit of Service Payments and Specifying the Purpose for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is Ordinance 102-2015, Declaring the Improvement to Certain Parcels of Real Property within the Airstow Development Area to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, Providing for the Collection and Deposit of Service Payments, and Specifying the Purpose for which those service payments may be expended. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is Ordinance 103-2015, Declaring the Improvement to Certain Parcels for the Creative Power Project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, Providing for the Collection and Deposit of Service Payments and Specifying the Purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 103-2015 to the suspension of the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Court, second by Mr. Rodriguez for the introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 103-2015. Questions or comments? Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Excuse me. Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 103-2015.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Court, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of 103.15. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance 103-2015 has been adopted. Those are all the ordinances we have under second reading. We do have Resolution 30-2015, which is authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development grant agreement with Plaza International Properties to provide funds to offset costs associated with renovations necessary to secure a new tenant at 4354 East Broad Street. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. Next, we have Resolution 31-2015, Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into an Agreement with EP Ferris and Associates for Design and Engineer Services for the Citywide Traffic Signal Interconnect Project, and declaring an emergency. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. Next is Resolution 32-2015, Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Payable and Semi-Grant Agreement with 3B Mechanical Heating and Cooling to Relentaken their Operations to 4040 East Main Street, Wyod, Ohio. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. It's also the last item we have under second reading. On the first reading, we begin with Ordinance 106-2015, Transferring $65,890.30 from previously unappropriated monies in the General Fund to the Tax Incentive Program, Making an Appropriation of $65,890.30 from the Tax Incentive Program Fund to the Tax Incentive Expense Account, and authorizing an income tax revenue sharing payment to the affected school district from the Tax Incentive Expense Account in the amount of $65,890.30 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 106-2015 to the suspension of the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 106-2015. Questions or comments? I think it's an excellent motion and sound. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 106-2015.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance 106-2015. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance 106-2015 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 107-2015, Amending Section 161.38 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Wyod, Ohio, titled Salary Schedule, and 161.37, titled Table of Authorized Personnel, and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is Ordinance 108-2015, Amending the Zoning Map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Wyod, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c2) to allow Scott Carter to operate a projectile manufacturing facility and property located at 127 North Hamilton Road owned by HGI Midwest II LLC. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. It's been referred to the Planning Commission, and we have a public hearing set for this particular ordinance for January 5, 2016. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 109-2015, Authorizing the Mayor to Grant a One-Time Exception to 161.17L for a specific employee and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 109-2015 to the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Thompson for the introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 109-2015. Questions or comments? Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 109-2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Thompson for adoption of Ordinance 109-2015. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance 109-2015 has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution 33-2015, Recognizing April Ricardo as the 2015 Court Administrative Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. Next is Resolution 34-2015, Recognizing Tim Schoingle as the 2015 Fire Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. Next is Resolution 35-2015, Recognizing Jeff Gold as the 2015 Police Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is also being read by Title Holman. Next is Resolution 36-2015, Recognizing Robert Johnson as the 2015 Labor Service Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. It is also the last piece of legislation we have before this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. Please step forward, state your name and address, and remember the rules that I stated before.
Gerald Dixon, 3877 Donahue Street. It's just a clerical name, and you may have already noticed it. When you were reading Ordinance 99-2015, the written sum is different than the numerical sum.
Oh, that's my fault. The ordinance has to correct now, but I forgot to change it on the agenda.
Because as you were reading it, I was looking at the number, and it didn't go inside.
Twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five or something like that.
Which is because no one else said anything last week.
I think the original ordinance has some corrections.
Good to hear. Start on your head. All right. Any other, anyone else to participate in the poll? All righty. Well, that brings us to Community Date Board. We'll begin with Gail.
Good evening, Council. I am actually going to defer my time to care in the two events are in the real house, but I do want to say we are working on planning all of the dates for our 2016 events. So this is a very busy time of year, so just because I don't have a poll report right now, doesn't mean we don't have a lot for now.
Who else?
They're all yours, so I might as well.
I would love to, exactly. December 14 through 17, we will be going around the city of Wyod, judging the lights. And if you haven't been around yet, God, there's more this year than there's ever been, and they are spectacular. So make sure to go around, especially to Anderson Avenue. I give him my neighbor a plug here, but he's also having people donate in the Ohio Food Day, so it's a great cause, and you get to listen to the music and watch the dancing lights, and it's a sight to see. December 19, we'll be having Marcus with Santa, and I will be back making pancakes as always, getting more on me than on the plate. So please come out. There should be between nine and ten new, possibly one, depending on how many people we have there. If you'd like to come out and hump, we've narrowed up seven o'clock, getting everything ready for it, and we'll have a librarian here telling stories and flyers and all sorts of fun stuff going on, so maybe this time.
All right.
And the road down the country.
And if you haven't already enjoyed caring for pancakes, you're missing out on it.
Right.
Anyone else have anything which we may do? All right. We'll move on to poll council, and we'll begin with Chairperson, I mean, we'll begin with, thank you, Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank you all for coming and appreciate all the help, and having united at Christmas tree light. It's always a special time. A lot of people out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out also. Had a lot of people to take out to the tree lighting, and it was wonderful. And I also want to thank Mayor Mattress for going ahead and having the new decorations outside. Very excited to see that we've got the menorah out there, and some parts of my family was just taken to depth, so thank you.
All right, Ms. Canner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, staying on the lights of ordinance, which are in the city of William Cole. It wouldn't rain, so it doesn't feel wild. The basketball season officially Friday night at Long's Academy. They get a good ball club. Had a couple of good players in, trying to throw it in. They very competitive. She do have a good ball club.
All right, Ms. Court.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really have no official book, and I want to say that just thank you so much for going right through your problems and overcoming them in their daily jobs or on the run, calling good. Thank you so much. I look out to the season and see you.
Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also want to thank you all for coming and thank you all for the input.
Hi, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you all for attending the live ceremony and also for staying for the meeting today.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for coming as well. I do want to, it's come to my attention that the November 17 meeting, one of my colleagues, to issue the fact that I'm requiring traffic to work. In fact, in the White House news that I have not fulfilled his obligations since he was appointed to council in 2011, I'd like to remind our colleague that the orders he left me in 2013 are full now as of my work commitments. I also find it increasingly incredibly interesting that this was not an issue for the past two years. It was not an issue last year, or even this summer. It was not an issue for my colleague until I supported her for me, and she lost the election for mayor last month. This sounds like sour grapes. I applaud. I want you all to know that I do take my public service very seriously. I'm available to my constituents. I speak with neighbors and residents regarding issues they think important, and on items of note, and use them. I bring their issues and opinions on managed committee, and I make sure that I, in the presence of both, ask all that's possible on board pieces of legislation. Lastly, I do want to thank people in my work that continue to bathe me. I want to thank the rest of my colleagues for their support, and I look forward to continuing to work with them after January 1st. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. I want to thank everyone for coming out to see. Appreciate you being here. We always enjoy having as many people in here as we can get. If the city wants to be totally full, standing one moment would be really nice. We have no other official business. I would therefore encourage entertaining one. Motion for adjournment, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Court for adjournment. Ms. Thursday, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. We're going to be coming back.